Call to order the City Council Meeting of June 18, 2013 of the Yukon City Council, Yukon, Oklahoma. Please stand for invocation and flag salute.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer. We give thanks for this opportunity to be here with open hearts and open minds. We ask, Lord Jesus, that you would watch over this meeting and we ask that you would help us to make the decisions that would be for the greater good of our city. And we ask that you would forgive us of our sins. And it's in Christ's name we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call to roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
All right, our first item is Presentations and Proclamations. If I could have Sherry and Carley come forward, please. Grayson, if you're not busy, would you mind joining us? Carley, I'm gonna hand you the microphone and let you do your business, okay?
On behalf of the Relight the Mill Committee and Friends of Yukon's Best, we would like to present you with a piece of the mill, of the mill sign. On behalf of all of us, we appreciate all of the support and resources that you have given to us. And as a token of our appreciation, we just wanted to make sure that you had a piece of the mill.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. This means great to everybody and I appreciate it. You know, everybody's getting a light bulb or they're getting a letter and this is very meaningful. I'll treasure this. Thank you so much.
For the record, the letters are costing everybody else.
Oh, believe me. We're in there.
And then I'd also like to invite everyone to the celebration. It will be Friday, May 28. The live music will start at 7:30. The relighting ceremony will be at 9:30 with a live auction of the letters T, Y, OU, and OSU. And then the rest of the letters from the old sign will be auctioned off through a silent auction. So we hope to see everyone there. Family-friendly, free event. So, thank you.
For those of you who didn't catch that, the event on the 28th, they will be auctioning off those letters. That's how it's gonna cost everyone else. Grayson, just got a little piece. We get a whole letter if we step up. All right, at this time, we move on to the visitors' section. If there's anybody here to address the council on a non-agenda item, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. Rick Caccini with the Veterans Museum. I wanted to give you a quick update of where we stood. Still, I wanted to thank the city, the City Park District, and all those that assisted us in getting the space at 601 Oak on the second floor. We were able to move in, clean up the place, get it squared away. We moved in some of our antiquities, artifacts from the previous wars. Unfortunately, this weekend, we had some rain hit us and one good thing is, none of the artifacts was damaged but some of the tiles, so we're working around the issue. The only thing I've got to say is that we're gonna have to keep looking for another place. This was supposed to be just short-term, but it's becoming shorter than short. But we're gonna continue operating from there and in hopes of someone in Yukon being able to step forward and assisting us in getting some space, either a building, a room, whatever they can afford. So at the time, we're gonna stay mobile with our operation and being able to visit the various schools in Yukon to give them some history and assisting the history teachers with the various wars that we've been involved in. And thanks again very much for your support.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll recess as the City Council reconvene as a Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of June 4, 2013, and B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $110,336.27. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Call to roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
At this time, we will adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. First item on the agenda is a consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all City Council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: the minutes of the regular meeting of June 4, 2013; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $680,428.34; C, designating the items on the attached list from the tech department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, denial of claim number 131673-BD from Michael Schafnet as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; E, renewing an agreement with the Oklahoma Environmental Management Authority for rental of a tub grinder for a three-year term at the rate of $475, $475 per hour; F, a prisoner-public works project contract with Oklahoma Department of Corrections for the assignment of Union City prisoners for public works projects at a base cost of $317.99 per month through the date of June 30, 2014; G, getting the date, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for July 2, 2013, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to discuss E and F and so if you want to approve the others for that.
Okay, I believe we'd have to revise the original motion to separate those two from the list and then address those individually.
Okay, well, I'd like to do that if we can.
Did you make the motion or did Mr. Gerba?
Yeah, basically, I'll retract the motion.
Okay, and mine as well. And we'll, I'd like to, we can go ahead and vote and I would like some discussion on E and F.
Okay, we need a motion that would separate E and F from the list?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we separate E and F from the list and we vote on the other ones.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Call to roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Now, going back, readdressing item E and F, renewing an agreement with the Oklahoma Environmental Management Authority for rental of a tub grinder for a three-year term at a rate of $475 per hour; A, F, a prisoner-public works project contract with the Oklahoma Department of Corrections for the assignment of Union City prisoners to public works projects at a base cost of $317.99 per month through the date of June 30, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Can we do both those at the same time or do we?
If we have a motion to approve or, then we can address them at the same time during discussion.
Okay, then I'll move that because the discussion won't be very long on either one, so.
So is your motion to approve E and F?
E and F after discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, well, first thing is, I'm not sure I even know what a tub grinder is and that we've got a three-year term. I assume we've had this for some period of time.
Yes, this is a renewal of an existing agreement.
Yeah, but what is a tub grinder?
Tub grinder is about the size of this room, hauled by a very large semi-tractor. It takes very large limbs, trunks of trees, all kinds of lumber in particular. It's not real happy when you throw steel in it, but it is a centrifugal force that grinds up and shreds, much like our chipper for smaller items. But it does it for, it does it for very large pieces of wood and it does it very, very quickly. This fee also includes the transportation and operation.
Of the tub grinder itself?
Of the tub grinder itself.
So we don't actually own the tub grinder, we're just renting it from some outfit?
From OMA.
OMA.
OMA, okay, that's.
Am I correct in understanding that that $475 per hour is for the hours used?
Hours used.
So, okay. And then on the second issue down there, the, on F down there, $317.99 per month, is that per prisoner or is that more?
No, that is, that's total cost for whatever they can assign us.
And then we also, I also noticed there was a 10% kicker in there when I read through the material and I, so it's really?
It adds $31 and?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine cents to the deal and then whatever number that they assign us. And we use those primarily in our street crews to go out and mow, edge, trim, under the supervision of a qualified and certified supervisor.
Yeah, and that's from the prison department, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah, and that's what, $350 a month is what we're talking about then and?
Yeah.
Like that for whatever, whatever they send us for community service work. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call to roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards and commissions and city officials.
None at this time.
Did we pass the other ones?
What do we have here?
Yeah.
Yes.
We voted on the first?
We passed them first.
Okay, I just didn't remember voting, sorry.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure.
Don't worry, I was gonna, I was gonna call for a vote on them too, so.
Oh, that's all right, we're there. Item 3, consider approving ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, no reports. Item 3, consider approving ordinance number 1291 and ordinance amending the employee retirement system-defined benefit plan for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees and the city of Yukon, Oklahoma pertaining to the plan designed, providing for contributions by employees, providing for employer pickup of mandatory contributions, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call to roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving ordinance number 1292, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Section 4.O3-18-43, 94-34A, 102-62A, 114-31A, 605.771, 701.5, 803A, and 901.2 to allow certain fees to be set by the City Council of the City of Yukon by resolution, providing for repealer and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call to roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 4A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1292. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call to roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Item 5, consider approving Amendment 2 to the Viola Water Agreement, Violia, I'm sorry, Agreement for Operations, Maintenance, and Management Services to modify the annual fee adjustment formula under Section 5.5 of the agreement and to include reimbursement for certain sludge hauling fees to the City of Yukon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if Grayson might just be able to elaborate on how those fees have been changed a little bit.
Let's take the annual fee adjustment formula portion first. Under that particular calculation, monies that the city was required to spend for maintenance at the wastewater treatment facility primarily were then added back into the formula, which allowed then for a cost-of-living adjustment, the CIP adjustment, to be calculated on the amount of money that we were required to spend annually anyway on maintenance costs. So what we have done is that, yes, Violia does deserve an amount, but we have set that amount at a fixed price for the term of the contract and then removed that, that amount that we spend because it, we get to set the amount. It can be $50,000, $75,000, whatever it is, whatever is required, but we don't think that we ought to have to pay a cost, CIP increase on the money that we actually spend. So we've removed that from the formula, replaced it with a fixed cost factor in the, in the agreement. Secondly, under the, we are, in the existing agreement and previous agreements, we must provide a place to dispose of sludge, that portion of our operation that comes out of our belt press primarily, where it is blended with chips, wood chips that we get from our chipper or in fact from our tub grinder that we utilize from time to time. And in, in that regard, we can no longer store that in the drying beds at the wastewater facility. They have become too, too large and we cannot, the, the, the amount is too large. So what we have to do is haul those off to the, to the, to our waste disposal site. But the agreement says that we have to provide a site. So they have to provide the hauling, we have to provide for the tipping fee to dispose of it. We felt that that was a good arrangement at that point. Arnold is to be commended. He found those things, he negotiated it to the point that I got to shake my head yes and, and we're ready to move forward at this time, gentlemen.
I believe we have an approximate dollar-figure savings for the City of Yukon based on those findings, don't we?
Well, we do over the 25-year term. Arnold, uh?
It's about, it starts out at about $2,500 a year and will grow every year they're active. So the last year, I figured it would cost us $10,000 to $12,000, but the City of Yukon wasn't doing a lot.
Per year, per year. It's over a 25-year period.
It's a significant amount of money. All right, let's, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call to roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Let's see, item 6, consider selecting a Yukon City Council representative for the Chamber of Board of Directors for the term of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Do I have a motion?
I move to nominate Councilman McCarron.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, maybe some.
Call for question. Call for question.
Did you see that train coming?
Probably not.
That one's moving.
Mr. McCarron, did you have some discussion? Is that something you would accept as a role with the council?
Graciously accept.
Huh? Well, I do attend most, what, I didn't even know what this involves.
Many, many hours, many, many hours of subjugation and ridicule.
Subjugation. Don't let him off.
I do understand the ridicule part. That's, that's pretty clear.
Is that all your discussion, Mr. McCarron?
Uh, well, I just, I assume that I have to accept or not accept, is that correct?
We would just like to hear whether you'd be interested in assuming that role.
Well, I'm not a member of the chamber.
Doesn't matter.
As are.
Our city is a member of that chamber.
Yeah, as are.
What, what happened was, when several years ago, this came about to improve the relationship between the City Council and the chamber and the chamber and the City Council really work well together, so it's just an opportunity for you to share in the meeting with the City Council and then take that to the chamber and if there's something with the chamber, then you can bring it over here. So it's just a liaison type of position.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering about the time requirements and that sort of.
Let me, can I address that as well?
It truly is very minimal. Yes, sir.
The Chamber of Commerce, earlier this year, late last year, amended their bylaws and so there's a member of the City Council on the chamber, a voting member, on the City Council, from the City Council that is on the Board of Directors. So that's an ex officio position, but it is a voting position. They meet once a month for their board meetings, usually last an hour to an hour and a half. There are other events that board members attend, but the time commitment is probably no more than, on average, a couple of hours a week.
Maybe.
Maybe. Depends on your level of involvement. You can be far more involved than that if you want to.
I have, I have a question for Mr. McCarron.
I don't have a cowboy hat.
Didn't, didn't you just recently retire?
Wow.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I thought I remembered that.
Yeah.
No, I have, along with the lines of discussion, I'm, I'm curious as to whether there is a city charter forbidding, but the term here shows July 1 to June 30. And I know that the board, the, the Chamber Board goes from January to December and I wonder if it would be more efficient if there's nothing with the city charter that would forbid it for us to appoint a member that would take their seat at the same time the other elected Chamber Board members take their seat. So we wouldn't be halfway into their year, their year's business before a new representative takes place.
It's by position, so it wouldn't, the, the terms don't expire on, on these board members on the chamber.
So.
There's not a term essentially.
Right, there, well, there, there is a term. They hold a, an election every three years, I believe, for chamber seats.
But the appointment is by the council.
I understand.
And so, you know, like, let's say, for instance, there is an ex officio member who is the city manager, there's an ex officio member who is the school board superintendent. When we get a new city manager, then we don't have to, their, their term, they don't have to be elected to the board, they're just there.
I understand. We, but we.
There's nothing in our charter to, directly answer your question, there's nothing in our charter.
That would forbid.
That would forbid or prohibit that to occur.
All right, so does anybody see a reason that we wouldn't change this term to match up with the term of the Chamber Board elections and when their new members take their seat and?
Well, I do, yeah.
Okay. You're happy with the?
Not for the reason that you think, but for the reason that our terms are the ones that set who's here and when.
Right.
What, what means then is you're gonna?
Oh, so you, you think that maybe after, maybe the councilperson's seat?
Expires.
Yeah, if they don't have a second term.
I'm still on the?
I understand.
On the Chamber of Commerce till, till January of that same year. Hey, I mean, that's the way it appears to me.
Well, the truth of the matter, that doesn't match with the dates, the fiscal year dates that we have here anyway.
Right, yeah, you would not be. If you're not a council member, you can't be on the board in that position.
You what? No, I'm sorry.
If you're not a council member, whether it's by expiration of term or some other reason that you vacate office, you automatically give up your position as a director, a board of, on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce.
And the City Council then, at that point, would have the authority to appoint a new member at that time?
Yes, sir.
If that term were terminated or expired in some way.
Well, they would have to, is that correct?
Okay, so my question goes back and I'm not sure I, I clearly understand. Is there any reason that we could not change the term, July 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014, to match up with the Chamber of Commerce's term, which would expire December 31, I believe, of 2013?
What time, when did the new council members come on? In May?
May.
May 1st.
That's why it's the way that it is. So this fits our calendar, I think, is why it's that way, Ken.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I think that's why it's always, we always.
Work meeting in May.
Yeah.
Well, I know that's when we reorganize and I didn't know if that was, this would fall into that category.
You could also appoint the council member for multiple years if you wanted to.
What do you think, Mike?
Until his term expires, I'll amend my motion.
That's all of my discussion, thank you. Motion has been made, a second has happened, so at this point, if there's no further discussion?
Easy.
Then we need to call a roll, please.
I think I probably would consider doing it for a year and then, you know. And I assume that I'll be able to decline next year.
Is there any further discussion?
Because Mr. Alberts won't be here.
Mike, you seem to have further discussion.
That's it.
Do we have any further discussion? Call to roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Maybe.
Not valid vote.
Smith?
Heck, yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike, we appreciate your, your help.
You're welcome, Ken.
Item 7, consider approving Resolution Number, Resolution Number 2013-8 as a resolution of the City Council establishing the 911 Emergency Telephone Service Fee for the calendar year 2014. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call to roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Item 8 is City Managers Report. These are information items only.
First, I'm very pleased to report to you that the final month of our reporting year, as it relates to our budget in particular, showed a very nice increase for the month, bringing us to a year-end close at above our projection of 4% for the year and we, we actually closed the year at 4.22%. Very, very pleased with the final month. Of course, Michael Momphelt is taking full credit for the increase and said he projected that it would occur several months ago. Michael and I, as you know, have a, have a annual wager of a small malt or milkshake and for the first two years I was here, Michael had to pay off to me. He took eight to 10 months to pay off, but he did end up paying off after all. This year, I fully intend to pay him within just a day or two after the start of the new fiscal year. I need to do that because I must inform you officially that Michael has tendered his resignation from the City of Yukon. He has taken a position as a professor of accounting at Shenandoah University in Virginia. You know, Michael, for those of us that work with him closely, we know that Michael is scary smart. There's, there's no other way to put it. I have grown to really not only appreciate the work that he has done for the City of Yukon, but to admire him as a young man personally. I have grown to really not only appreciate the work that he has done for the city of Yukon, but to admire him as a young man personally, and I hate losing him. We will move on, we will find a suitable candidate and put them in place, but it's hard to lose somebody of his caliber. He truly is a credit to this city, and one that I personally hate to lose very much. With that said, I would also encourage each of you that can, this coming Friday morning, because I will not, I will not be in attendance, I am otherwise unavoidably detained Friday morning, but Friday morning, at the Dale Robertson Center, right following the community coffee, will be the presentation by the University of Oklahoma School of Architecture of the final report on the revitalization project of our downtown and our main street. I hope that all of you that can will take the opportunity to show up and, and participate in that, and just know that it is but the first, the end of the very first step of what we're hoping to do in downtown. We think we have a great springboard to, to help us launch into a revitalization of our main street that I'm sure each of you, as well as I, believe is well-deserved and much-needed. The public is invited, Conrad, to that meeting, and we hope that they will all take the opportunity to show up, participate, and be actively involved in the planning process as we move forward. Tammy and I will both be gone, in our absence, Larry is going to conduct the, the meeting, and I look forward to the reports. I can listen to them Friday, Larry, so I'm looking forward to that.
Are you going to video, are you gonna have Gary videotape that, so for those?
Well, we hadn't even talked about it.
So those of us who have not, or will not be here because we'll be out of town?
Right.
Like to probably see that as well.
Gary, can we make that happen? Well, I have, I have something I can, at home, that I can donate.
Just, just a comment, I, I believe that Professor Loon will have a PowerPoint to present.
Okay.
You can certainly make that PowerPoint available.
All right. Thank you. With that, Mayor, I stand ready to answer questions.
Any questions?
When is Mike Momfelt's last, hey, when is he?
Oh, he's telling me August first, I'm shooting for somewhere around the fifteenth August. I'm sure he's gonna have more to say about it than I am, but we're working, we've advertised the position, it is a very specialized position, and it's very difficult to advertise in the right spot to garner the right kind of applicants for that, but we're moving forward with that as quickly as we possibly can.
No further questions, item nine, new business? Seeing none? Item ten, council discussion, Mr. McCarron.
Thank you, Rick.
Welcome.
And John, I did have one thing I think that's pretty, pretty neat, when we had the tornadoes in El Reno and Banner and down there, you know, I really took the time, first time I've actually gone into my shelter since I've been here. The support from local here, police, firefighters, and emergency management people, I actually listened to each one of the sirens and stuff that they went off, they were very timely, I noticed a lot of people in my neighborhood at least responding to them, I felt like that that entire event was done very well, and I just wanted to give a little shout-out to the, you know, the police and the fire and the emergency management folk that coordinate that activity, because it obviously, had the tornado come all the way down Main Street, it would have made a really big impact on our town, and I think the loss of life and everything would have been minimized, because, you know, our local folks were on top of it, and I was very, very proud of that. I also regret that Mike Momfelt is moving on to Shenandoah, I've enjoyed talking to Mike, and I've enjoyed his expertise, he always has a, has a good answer, and apart from that, I think that's all for me today.
Mr. Gerba?
I just want to applaud the, all the hard work done by the Relight the Mill Committee and Friends of the Mill, I think it's really impressive what a group of citizens can do when they get together, and just to kind of do a grassroots activities like that, and the amount of people that got involved, you know, Grayson got a nice piece of history there, and I just think it was really fantastic watching that come together, so really, really pleased, and I'm glad the city can help out in any little way we can, thanks.
Mr. Alberts?
I'd just remind, we've got the Fourth of July coming up and all the activities in the park, and just to be responsible and careful, but get out and enjoy everything that's gonna take place, because there are so many special events that, that occur down there, but be responsible. The other thing is, is I've been back trying to run an exercise, and just kind of a reminder to the community about people that are walking and biking and jogging, when you're in a car, be careful, I had a couple of reminders of that the last time, that I was out jogging, and it's kind of scary, and if you're, you know, driving down one of the faster streets at a high rate of speed, I mean, scoot over to that inside lane and get away from the jogger going down the street, stuff flies off the vehicles, rocks fly up at you, it's, it's, it's kind of weird running, so just be mindful of the people that are out there exercising, or walking, or little kids on the bicycle, move over, you're bigger than they are, you can hurt us, so that's all I have.
Mr. Opitz?
John, I think that was somebody that was after you.
I think it was Mike McCarron.
If it wasn't then, it will be next week.
Took me a long time to modify my car to do that.
Don't run in Ward Four.
I'm sorry, Mr. Opitz, we, we've interrupted you.
Okay, don't you love Yukon? Arnold, you like Yukon?
All right, that's what I thought. It is a great place to be, and all the activities that we've got going on, like John said about the Fourth of July, the Freedom Fest, come out, enjoy, have some fun, watch the fireworks, listen to the music, it's gonna be a blast, so be there.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Fourth of July will be exciting, we are looking forward to it, it's a big event here in Yukon, and I would recommend, it's a family-friendly event, so I would recommend that everybody participate, there are two days' worth of fun and excitement, so don't miss it. Also would like everyone that could to keep our city manager honest as he is, I know he's not public with this, but he's gonna go under the knife here in a few days, and we want to make sure that that knife is blessed, and all the nurses and doctors that'll be taking care of him, we pray that they will be with him, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers over the next few days, and with no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned.